We are recording. Okay, folks, I'm going to share my screen. Let me move some stuff around really quickly. And I will begin our presentation. So again, welcome. It's very nice to have everyone here this evening. We're going to go ahead and jump in. So I always like to kick off with the agenda and some agreements. So some of the stuff we're going to discuss this evening are, while I have a captive audience, we're going to talk a little bit about our current and our ongoing staff trainings. Want to differentiate between what is a distance learning schedule and a blended learning model? I think it's important to let you guys know the lens through which we looked and as far as creating the schedule and some of the stuff that we factored in in the creation. A presentation of our distance learning schedule. And I'm going to give you guys a goodly amount of time for you guys to really kind of sync that in. And then there'll be a time at the end for comments or questions. Sorry, just one moment. Can you guys tell this is my first? There we go. Excellent. Okay, so some of the trainings and that our teachers went through over the summer. They attended some trainings from Stanford University, which really focused on social emotional learning. So that was, that was really cool. The University of Phoenix, a lot of, I think 13 of our teachers attended the University of Phoenix training. And I don't know if you guys know, but they are really are, they set the bar as far as distance learning is concerned. We had several of our more eager teachers get some class, Google Classroom training. And then we had an optional, we actually are right in the middle of an optional staff collaboration training, which is lasting this entire week. And what it is, is it's a kind of ascertaining what needs and what challenges that we saw in quarter four. And kind of looking at what kind of trainings, what kind of support can we provide our staff during the four training days at the beginning of the school year so that we can hit the round running effectively? Some of the topics that we talked about was obviously our distance learning schedule. Technology, attendance, student engagement, how to assess students. That's very important to see where they are and where we need to take them. What to do with our disengaged students? How do we provide strong student feedback? Social emotional learning that training will be taking place tomorrow. Staff care and trauma informed practices as well. And then we kind of talked a little bit about getting how we can get to know our students in a virtual way. That's a very important one. And as I said, we have a new crop of kids coming from the elementary schools. And we want to do our best to get to know them in a very low stress environment. The last one's important too, because we know, we all know that we are going to be distance learning for at least the first quarter. And so what our teachers are going to do is they are going to map out that quarter through the lens of distance learning. And really focus on the major standards that students need to be successful. Sorry, I have to move some of this stuff around from time to time. So the distance learning versus blending learning model, the distance learning model involves students learning from home. It's important that we provide them a schedule. So that parents and staff and families are all on the same page and we can really make sure that students are achieving and are successful. A blended learning model involves students being on campus for a portion of the time and at home for the other portion of the time. That schedule involves all adhering to all the safety protocols. And they must be in effect for a blended learning model. So our blended learning model is currently under revision. However, our focus is on preparing to deliver the best distance learning instruction that we possibly can. Some of the factors in our work, what did we study? Well, you guys filled out a parent distance learning survey feedback and we went through line by line and including extracting quotes so that we front loaded the work that we did this week through that lens. We have a lot of student anecdotal feedback regarding their experiences with distance learning. Teacher feedback regarding technology training means that it's going to inform some of the stuff that we're going to be doing those days before school begins. And obviously, we need to make sure that we adhere to the current state mandates regarding instructional minutes. The balance between synchronous and asynchronous instruction and daily student interaction. So this is our plan. I'm sorry, I've got some things coming up on the screen. Blue involves synchronous face to face learning. Yellow involves asynchronous learning. So screencastify, you know, something where you would be able to tape a lesson. And then we built in breaks. It's interesting during, during our trainings this week. We came, we came upon 20 minutes as being a wonderful amount of time for you to get away from the computer, get up and stretch your legs, get something to drink, use the restroom and the like. So we built those into the schedule as well. And I'm just going to let you stare at it for a little while before I begin to explain. Okay, well, if we take a look, what we have is kind of an evens and odds kind of schedule here. So Tuesdays and Thursdays, students would attend, virtually attend period two, period four, and period six. You see that we even built in a lunch here. We wanted it to kind of resemble school as much as possible. And I think those built in breaks that happen when students are in campus are equally important at home. You can see a little 80 in parentheses here, and that's the number of instructional minutes per class. The requirement from the state is 240 instructional minutes. And we don't have really strong guidelines as to, you know, do we do 50/50 or anything like that? One of the things that our teachers remarked again and again during our trainings is that they want as much face time with the students as possible. So this equates to 160 minutes of face to face time in this schedule. And then that would mean that the, the other 80 minutes would be asynchronous. So two thirds would be face to face. And one third would be asynchronous. I like this Monday section too. Obviously, this adheres to the state's requirement on daily interaction with teachers, but more importantly, it really kind of continues the work that we began and we launched last year with Character Stronger, a program on dealing with, with issues and stuff. And I think that is never more important than what we're going through right now. So we wanted to build that in and honor that time. It's also a time that we can utilize for for kind of a check in for students, what's working, what needs some help. And I love this right here because it is followed by teacher collaboration where we can take this information and share it among the staff down here. Now, these yellow ones, remember, are just for students who need this extra perhaps structured asynchronous time. And we wanted to provide families that opportunity to point to a schedule and say, hey, you need to do, you know, your ELA work in period two from eight thirty to ten o'clock or to nine, 10. So we're providing that right there. But we've also managed to build in a lunch and a break time as well. And I also kind of want to talk a little bit about this as well. I think one of the, the more important teacher comments that came out of today's meeting in particular was the need to kind of take a five and stand up and stretch and kind of wiggle, get the wiggles out and come back kind of focused and prepared. So that was good. I'm going to move on from that one. Some of the strengths of our plan, well, it allows for 160 synchronous live instructional minutes per week with the balance 80 minutes being asynchronous. It provides for daily live interaction with teachers and students. The block schedule allows for lesson flexibility within each class period, and that's called general gradual release if you're an educator. And basically what that does is it allows that 80 minutes to be divided up in a variety of ways where a teacher can introduce a topic in a very supportive way. They could then take, say, the, the middle 20 minutes of that 80 minute period and have students begin to kind of work in collaborative groups and do the learning with the teacher still there. And then it provides an opportunity for the teacher to bring everyone back and ascertain, you know, did we get this? Let's, let's kind of take a reflection moment and see. Do you understand this? What can I do right now that'll help you out with this? So I really love that. It allows a lot of flexibility and it also allows you really to deliver a solid lesson within one period rather, rather than having to wait perhaps until the next day. It also takes into account that Mondays are holidays. So when we scheduled that Monday largely collaborative day on a Monday, what that does is that allows us to have our Monday holidays without any interruption to instructional times. So we'll maintain that amount. And equally as important, it allows for a continuation of our social emotional learning and character development, which we use character strong during our advisory class. Again, something that's very important. There'll be significant time available for staff to collaborate in training so we can continually improve in response to feedback and student needs. It's a balanced instruction. What that means that all classes have the same amount of instructional minutes and that allows us a lot of latitude when we finally reintegrate back into school. It's a structured schedule offering Monday for asynchronous work. Not, not perhaps not all students would need it, but we wanted to make sure that it was available and that it was routinized so that that would help families out. All asynchronous instructional minutes fit into a typical school day of eight to three. School time does not need to interrupt family time. There's only three classes on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and the other three are on Wednesdays and Fridays. And it really, we really believe it, it reduces the likelihood of students who may feel overwhelmed if there's too many heavy hitting subjects on, on one day. So it kind of cuts that up. That is it. That is my brief, brief presentation. I'm going to stop my sharing. Make sure everybody's here. All right. So our moderator today is Mr. Tavani. Mr. Tavani is going to kind of monitor who's raising their hands and admit people and unmute them. So Mr. Tavani, if you would.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Everybody can hear me, yeah? If you are new to Zoom or new to trying to raise your hand in Zoom, I'll walk you through that briefly. If you go down to the bottom panel of the Zoom window, you can click on participants and you are one of the 156 participants in this meeting. And then at the bottom of that panel that pops up on the right hand side of your screen, you can hit the raise hand button down at the bottom. That then puts you into the queue. And I will be then just working from the top on down. So we'll be getting to as many questions as we can within the time that we have, which is significant now. So we hope we can clarify as much of your concerns or questions through this Q and A process and we'll refer back to the slides as needed. So if everybody's good with that, then I am, of course, if you're not, you would raise your hand and we wouldn't get to you for a while. But I'm going to call from the top of the list here, and it looks like first up we have Masha. So the process goes like this. I click something here on my end and it asks you to unmute yourself and you need to do something there to have the floor. But once you click the unmute, you have the floor. So Masha should be jumping on sometime soon.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for sharing the schedule. I have two questions. One is about Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, first hour. I'm new to the school, so I'm not sure what was the abbreviation there, AVID?
Oh, yes, that AVID is advancement via individual determination. Yes, it's, it's really an amazing program, so much so that we actually added a seventh grade component to it. And it really focuses on students who are not represented going to college and perhaps haven't had that thought in their mind. And what it does is it, it makes that thought a reality and it also buttresses what they're doing with the skills that they'll need, like how to advocate for themselves, how to take notes properly, you know. Point of concerns like going into a group and kind of being vulnerable enough to say, I really don't get, I can't get past this, this step, you know, can you guys help me out? It's a very collaborative process. I love it. Our two teachers that teach AVID are Ms. Foster and Ms. Mara, and they are amazing. So sorry, long-winded response, but it's
Okay.
strongly about.
Thank you. We are very excited about it. And my second question is about the staff training. You listed all the trainings that they did. Did they do the differentiated instruction through technology? Was it added to the list?
Differentiated instruction through technology. You know what? I would have to check on that. I know there was a component in it in the University of Phoenix trainings when they talked about kind of the pedagogy behind virtual environment and how to kind of get your head away from the brick and mortar and towards the towards the distance learning mindset. So they didn't touch on it there, but it's certainly something that we'll continue to, to study.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Good to see you again.
Thank you, Masha. Okay, next up is Wendy.
Hi, everyone. Nice to see all the parents. And, and Mr. Tavani and Mr. Roach, hello, everyone. My question is, I want to ask about attendance and about the kids being during the live instruction. How is that going to be set up and monitored? That we don't have kids that are logging in and checking out and not paying attention? And how do we know that they've stayed engaged during the live instruction? This is a big concern of mine. I have a lot of other concerns, but I know other parents do too. So I'm going to just stick with attendance and who's, who's keeping the kids engaged and making sure that they're paying attention other than us parents that will be poking them the whole time?
Good. Well, first of all, Wendy, thank you for the poking. I think that's going to be an important part of it. And I love the timing of the question because just today we learned that. So the main mode of synchronous instruction is going to be through Google meets. And that's something that we used at the tail end of last year. And we learned today that they are coming out with an option that will give you almost like an attendance. It's a contact log of everybody that was in there. And for the length of time that they were in there too. So I think though we haven't kind of fallen on a specific attendance, we did speak about it today. We had a breakout group on that. But I think that's a pretty solid way rather than taking instructional time to kind of read down the list and say, Billy, are you here? You know, all the way down. As far as monitoring, the teacher is going to be monitoring during the entire 80 minute instruction. And another thing that Google meets is coming up with is the ability to do breakout rooms. And I think this is really important. I think student voice needs to be used in class as much as possible. And that collaborative piece, not only is it amazing for learning, but it also kind of satisfies a social need that they, that they would have definitely. And it allows the teacher the ability to kind of drop into these different groups and kind of check on them. Or, or, you know, if, if one of the groups needs a teacher to come there, they can just pop back in and say, hey, can you come here? And then they all would kind of gather back at the end. So I'm very excited about what we learned about Google today and haven't had a chance to share with my administrative team yet, but they probably know now. Anyway, good question, Wendy, and keep poking.
Yeah. And Wendy, I can add something to that there in terms of engagement, like your question regarding, how do we know that they're actually doing the stuff that teacher is doing? Instead of like playing Fortnite on their phone or on a computer over here, how do we know what they're doing? Of course, we won't know exactly what they're doing, but we do have a program that is going to help us big time with that. It is called Go Guardian. And Go Guardian is something that our school has had for a number of years. Many teachers throughout the district use Go Guardian. And the way that it works is essentially at the classroom level, the teacher can send everybody to a specific link. And if those students meander off of that tab on their browser, then it would change the shading of that student's name or of their little screen icon. And that indicates to this, to the teacher that that student has wandered somewhere else. And so the student, the teacher can then inquire or contact the student in the meeting to, to say, hey, everybody, let's make sure we're back on the right tab here. We're looking at blah, blah, blah. So that is something that we've had for a long time. It's also the same tool that we use to filter our content so that students aren't accessing inappropriate content. And anytime they're logged in, as they will be to their PGUSD account, that filter is at work. So we have pretty good controls over what, over knowing what students are doing during a class meeting. I hope that helps. Okay, next up, Jennifer.
Hi.
Hi. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hi. Thank you, Mrs. Tavani and Principal Roach, and for all the families that are listening to. I have two students that are attending. Or we're all going to do our best to attend, you know, and be as present as possible. But my biggest concern is for my advancing sixth grader. So Giorgio will be joining the class that is going to be added from not just Forest Grove, but from Robert Downe as well. And I'm curious what the protocol is going to be for the introduction to all of their teachers that they would have otherwise met had they gone to the school prior to the pandemic and made those trips and actually were able to engage with the staff that they're going to have to deal with virtually. I just really need to know how that's going to be laid out, if it's going to be done prior to them joining the day, like the first day of school, or what's going to be the attempt to make them bond with the teachers they're going to interact with prior to getting there?
Jennifer, that's a, that's a really good question. And you know, we did, I don't know if you were aware, but at the tail end of last year, we did a virtual interrupt introduction to our fifth grade classes at both Robert Downe and Forest Grove. And it went really well. We just kind of opened it up because, you know, during the time that you're talking about pre-pandemic, they would have been able to kind of walk around the school and get to know how the lay of the land was. And it was interesting that they had some very very interesting questions and thoughts in their head about what middle school was. So that provided us a really good opportunity for us to kind of dispel some of those myths perhaps told by an older sibling. We actually discussed that today, and I don't think it needs to be, you know, a one shot deal. I think it needs to be a process in which a portion of every class is dedicated to getting to know you. We have a wonderful teacher in sixth grade, Ms. Milligan. And she has a way at the beginning of her class to personally greet each student. And she's working on a way to do that in a virtual way as well, where they're looking at each other and they're doing their introductions. Also too, we, we kind of talked about the first day of school being a Wednesday. But we're thinking about making that a Monday schedule and really taking that entire first day of school as kind of a get to know you and icebreaker. We've, we had some really good ideas today about kind of having students that, okay, so we've had Character Strong for quite some time. That's the character program. And they have one really wonderful exercise where students say their name and they do a special little physical thing that ties to their name. And the students will kind of continue to do that all the way around the room. So by the end of it, they know all the students' name and they have to kind of copy their little wiggle. So we're thinking of that as as, as a way, but I really, like I said, I don't think it's a, it's can't be a one shot deal. It has to be a process by which we continue to offer that time where students feel comfortable getting to know their teacher, but also one another. And that's why I think the collaborative portion of the education is super, super important.
Absolutely. I have one more, I have one more question. That would be for my eighth grader, because now he's transitioning. And that, I think that the, the feedback that he gave me pre, that last final quarter was that I felt that, or he felt that he didn't have a voice in how he would interact with teachers on the opposite end. More questions were posed on him than he was able to ask of them to maybe ignite some kind of interest in what he was doing because it was just kind of dropped on them as it was everybody across the board. But I felt like he needed a way to address his issues of being engaged or without feeling like he would be in trouble for not knowing how to effectively add the curriculum in that fashion. I felt like my son checked out really soon after and we couldn't reel him back in. I had a tutor. I mean, I was doing things, everything that was at my disposal to try and keep him engaged. But he, you know, has a tendency to do that ostrich head in the sand and kind of look and think that it's just going to go away. And clearly, we all know that it's not going to go away anytime soon. So I would like to hopefully, you know, nip this in the bed before we get to the point where we've lost, we were, we're like effectively in a gap year. I'm trying to avoid that with both of my children. And, and I'm just hoping that you have some answers for that as well.
Jennifer, first of all, great comment, great questions. And I think it's something that bears discussion for everybody to kind of hear. Quarter four was unpleasant. We like to refer to it as emergency learning because we were literally kind of all of us thrown into the, the deep end of the pool. And it was very difficult to kind of navigate without, without a lot of the stuff that we're doing during the summertime. I, I think, I, I think you're, the first thing I guarantee is that what you just raised is going to be one of our discussion topics on the four days prior to school. I think that's extremely important. And I know it's different for perhaps educators and students to have the same kinds of interactions when they're doing kind of this virtual thing as opposed to face to face. But I think it's something that definitely bears discussion and, and I intend to do that. Also, as part of our Mondays during that advisory class, it was brought up today by one of our stellar teachers as a way for students in a very kind of secure and safe environment to say what's not working.
Exactly.
Yeah, we want them to be, we encourage them. That's the only way we're going to get better is if we know what a problem is so that we can actually attack it. And so I think during that time, along with building that initial trust is going to be, how's it going? What's working for you? Because we want to know that as well. But also what's not working for you? Like, how can we get better? How can we improve on this? Because the stakes are much higher than quarter four. I mean, this, this is, this is real now. We have attendance, we have grades, we have expectations for students, we have expectations for staff and teachers. Does that make sense?
It does completely. And I'm just making sure that we're all addressing those same issues because having, this is clearly not going to change anytime soon. But having this feedback from what their experience is going to be will really even help them with how emotionally years from now, they're going to deal with this situation. And a pandemic should not be something that will leave them traumatized. It should be that we are all coming together and trying to make this an efficient, as efficient as possible under the duress that is established, but that we're know that they're loved and cared for. That's all that we're asking parents.
You know, Jennifer, and that's a great, great comment. And I've read study upon study upon study that says if students feel safe, if they feel comfortable with their learning, they will learn much quicker and much better. So I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, it looks like Siobhan.
Hello.
Hello. I can't see you, but I can hear you.
You don't have to see me. So I had a couple of questions. One was about just assessment and ensuring that the kids are actually making the progress that's expected. I'm assuming that there haven't been any changes in what those expectations are as far as, you know, grade level goals and things like that. So I just was curious about what the, you know, how they're going to be ensuring that. And then my second question is just about kind of, I guess they're extracurricular. Like the, is there still going to be an attempt to do some kind of yearbook? Because my daughter was hoping, you know, she was invited to be part of the yearbooks. I'm just wondering that kind of stuff, is that still going to kind of be incorporated? And and there was also a question about like a first period Spanish class that the kids were interested. So I'm just curious if any of that stuff is still in play.
Really good questions, really good questions. So to speak to your second question about extracurricular things like the yearbook, heck yes. We're doing that. It's, it's a quick answer, easy answer, but those are the kind of things that students enjoy. Those are the kind of students, things that students are tied to the school. They perform better academically when they have these kind of ties. So absolutely, we need to do that. We need to continue to do this. I don't want this to be the gap in our long line of yearbooks. That simply will not do. As far as athletics, I know that there was just a decision from the CIF which kind of talks a little bit about sports and they're not going to begin anything until either December or January-esque. And we are a member athletically of the MTJAL. And so that's kind of like the middle school version. And so I know that those folks have been waiting for how the high school folks are going to fall so that they can then make choices. So I will let you guys know as soon as possible that we, when we can safely do after school athletics. To your first question, it's a super important question when, when we talk about assessing students. Never before in history are we going to face as wide a swath of achievement levels as we will this year. And what I mean when I say that is you have some students who have been studying and enriching themselves over the summer and are rip roaring ready to go. You have other students who perhaps a number of families, perhaps it's a family issue, disengaged in March. And so you can see there's going to be a massive swath of achievement levels in our job. And our job is going to be to begin the school year knowing what the heck we're up against. And so we talked about assessments, I mean, the time can be better for the question. We talked about assessments today. And we talked about, we have a laundry list of assessments that are specific to each discipline that's going to give them information on how ready they are for grade level standards and instruction. We fully understand that there may be the need to reteach some of the standards from the year prior because of what shook out with quarter four. But know that as a school, we are definitely a data-driven school and that we know that our students are going to come in with a variety of different levels of achievement. And so my mantra, and actually I kind of wrote at the top of the page for today, was assessments early and often. And I'm not talking tests, I'm, I'm talking valid assessments that let us know where students are, which identify strengths and which identify deficiencies so that we can tailor our instruction to bring them up to grade level. Now, is it going to happen all this year? No. To be honest, it's not. This is going to be a long-term thing, but the work starts on the 12th of August. So we intend to use those assessments early and often. We have a lot of collaboration time built into our Monday. And we, we do what's called professional learning communities, PLCs. And that's where we look at these assessments and we see how students are doing so that if we need to target with a specific intervention, we can do so. Or if there's a more global problem with a specific standard, we can reteach that standard. And also, sorry, I'm getting on my soapbox, I'm a big believer in this. It allows for teachers who perhaps had a standard that didn't quite go quite as well as a colleague, it allows them the opportunity to learn how that other colleague did it and re-instruct. It makes us better, basically. That is a super long-winded response to your question, but I hope I answered your question.
No, I appreciate, and I just really appreciate all the time and energy that the whole staff has put into this, because it's been a crazy time, but we really appreciate everything that you're all doing.
I got to tell you, it is fun seeing those guys again. And I think they're enjoying hanging out with us again. We're, we're pretty close staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I think it's Manal. Pardon me if I blew your name.
Hello, I don't know if you can hear me. I think you can now, you'll be able to see me. Hi, how are you guys? Thank you so much for taking the time and giving us some time to discuss these issues. I really appreciate, again, all the staff with their learning and it's not easy. My, I have a couple of questions and I just added one after you talked about something. My first question is the ratio of the student per class. You mentioned the class will be about 80 minutes long. So how is the class, if you can give me like a view how the class is going to look like? How many students per teacher are going to be there on the screen?
Okay, well, we're, it's going to depend on the class, heavily on the class. So our average ratio is probably right around 26 to one. So I would, that's the first bit of information I would give you. Now, in your first question, when you're talking about the 80 minutes, are you talking about lesson flow or?
In the schedule, it says there 80 minutes, like period two, 80 minutes. Is that the length of one, like the student will be sitting in front of the computer for a total of 80 minutes?
That's correct, yes. Well, and we'd like to, we'd like to also book in breaks at some point because
There is break in between.
Right, but breaks within the 80 minutes.
Oh, nice.
Yeah, it's, it's good to kind of stand up and kind of, they're middle school kids, right?
Yes.
They got to get the wiggles out from time to time. And so you stand up, you kind of wiggle, and then it's a really good time to kind of refocus. And, and the same for the teacher as well.
Exactly, it's for everybody. You need, at least every hour, you need to have 10 minutes of break. So I was wondering, like, for 80 minutes, are, are you expecting my son Michael to sit 80 minutes?
Right, well, and there's, and there's also transitions built in there, if that makes any sense, yeah.
Great, great.
I'd like to add something on that really quick. If you just kind of picture a, a classroom and the way that a typical classroom works, how a teacher kind of designs a lesson within the class time, the 80 minutes, for example, and has maybe a, a, a warm-up. And then maybe there's a little bit of a, like, information from the teacher to the students. Then students do something to process, maybe they collaborate. Then maybe there's like a task at the end to check for understanding. All of those same things can still be happening within the 80-minute class period. And not all of them will require that they are doing it on the computer. So that, that 80 minutes is the window of the class, but there may be time where the teacher presents a problem, a question, something for the students to do. It may be with pen and paper. And they're using work time during the class to, to come up with a product that then they submit or, 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 you know, give to the teacher.
Great, thank you. My second question, how should I expect my kids? I have two kids, one going to be in eighth grade and the, my other kid is going to sixth grade with, just like Jennifer and yourself.
That's right.
So we're in the same place here, yay.
Same boat, yes.
So my question is, how much should I expect my? I know my daughter is good, she can take care of herself, but I'm a little bit worried about the sixth grader, because he just was in fifth grade and he is now in a big kid's school. So what should I expect of him time after the three o'clock? When the school is done? I, I know he needs to put on time out of himself. What is, how long is that time, including homework time?
Well, it's going to vary a little bit. And let me kind of go back to the beginning portion of your question, because yeah, we are definitely in, in the same boat. Our sixth grade teaching staff is an amazing group of people. And they, year in and year out, deal with faces like this. Because of the fear of kind of transitioning into a brand-new place where there's a lot of big kids in around. So they are well-versed in very scaffolded manner, very supportive manner, slowly kind of building these kids' skills up so that they feel confident in asking questions and raising their hand, which is incredibly important. And, and so I think they do a wonderful job. And again, as a school, it's interesting, even though we, we know that our sixth grade students were here last year, those seventh grade teachers are not going to know them either. So it's, it's our job as a school to get to know our kids. I think that comes first and foremost. That comes before, you know, the, the assessments and the projects and the this and that. It's getting to know our kids. And, and like I said, lowering that effective filter to the point where a student feels confident being wrong, where a student feels confident raising their hand and saying, I don't get it. And so our goal is to get to that place as soon as possible. And then, as I talked about later, as a staff, we meet and discuss, we call them our students of concern. We meet and discuss students that are still having kind of challenges. And that's where we go kind of a little bit more targeted in what we're doing. You know, we talk about those students. The entire sixth grade team talks about those students.
How soon, how soon do you think you will have the result of that?
The results of?
Assessment, yeah.
You know what, that depends. And that's going to be part of our four days prior to the beginning of the school year. Again, like I said, I really don't want it to get into the way, in the way of getting to know students. I think that's first and foremost. If we want a valid assessment result, we need to remove what barriers we can prior to that so that we know exactly where they're at. But that information is going to be communicated internally. It's obviously going to be communicated externally as well. It might not even be a grade per se. We call it a diagnostic assessment. So this, this, this test is really for the teacher, to see what I'm up against, what I'm looking at, and how I can tailor my instruction to kind of raise those kids up. Does that make sense?
Yes, yes, awesome. My question after that was about material. I know the students usually have the material in their desk. Are they going to be allowed to have materials at home? Are you going to ask the parent to purchase the material? How's it going to work?
Yes, actually, that was, we started that list today. I mean, this, I could not have planned this on a better day, because a lot of the stuff that we're discussing right now happened today. We're discussing a list of, one of our teachers, one of our math teachers said, I would like the students be, to be able to do pen and pencil and paperwork and be able to show their work, take a picture of it, send it to the teacher or something like that. And that, and, and also too, we want to take those opportunities to remove ourselves from the, from the screen to do that kind of stuff. Yeah, our home economics teacher is wondering, what kind of materials can I expect a parent to have? Not to do something crazy and go out and get, you know, some crazy spice, but what do you think they have in their kitchen that I can then utilize in my lessons? They don't have to go out and get something. So long story short, we are creating that list. Our office staff will get back next week. And what we'll do is we'll put something together for parents and we will shoot that out as soon as we can.
Great. And my question also included the, the subject material, like the math book, the history book.
Yes.
Other books that in the school.
Yes.
Are we going to come and pick them up sometimes? Or how's it going to be?
Well, Manal too, it, it's, it's interesting, because during the summer, we did yearbook distribution. So we distributed the yearbooks, we distributed the, for eighth grade kids. We distributed the contents, the stinky contents of lockers i- in the back area. So we had a really good process and a contact-free process for, for parents to come and pick up their items and stuff like that. And we kind of envisioned that kind of going the same way.
Awesome, okay.
Oh, next one. I'm sorry, I was listening through the door.
Okay, one last question, actually. You mentioned something about students being disconnected in March or you had, you know of a student who continued the learning. I understand now, today we are in July 22nd and the school is going to start in August 12th. I'm going to be honest with you, my kids can shut down the school, they disconnected on June, what was it, June 3rd?
Okay.
The last day of school, they didn't want to talk about school. So what advice do you have for me as a parent to prepare my, my kids? Again, especially my sixth grader, not to be fallen behind? Because I know he can do it, but he doesn't want to.
You, you know, I, I think, a short answer, because I know we've got other hands coming up. But short answer is a growth mindset. We're a growth mindset school, really and truly. So failing at something is not closing a door. It, it's not, you know, a dead end on a road. It's an opportunity to learn and to learn quicker. And also advocating for oneself. So don't be afraid to ask those questions. Don't be afraid to contact the teacher and say, I don't understand that. That's our job.
Okay. Awesome.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
For sure.
All right, so I am reminded that in the interest of time, we have 10 or so people waiting. And so we're going to try to get to as many of you as possible here before six o'clock, which is now just 11 minutes away. So we'll try to keep it brief while also answering your questions. Next up is Julie.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead, Julie.
Thanks, I like the new schedule. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, when will the kids get their schedule?
Ah, good question. Just talked to my counselor about that. Generally, schedules go live on Monday or Tuesday of next week. And the student would formally come here on site and grab it. Obviously, that's not going to be the case. And so on Monday morning, I'm going to be meeting with my counselor who returns to work. And we're going to find a way to have that either unveiled and illuminate or some other manner. So we will be in contact with you as soon as we know how we're going to play that.
Okay, so that was early next week?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. And the second question, you guys already kind of touched on this, but I just want to clarify the live instructions for, instruction for 80 minutes. You said the teacher may actually assign some work, have the kids work on it. But will the teacher be available that entire 80 minutes so that they are not able to check out or just assign work and then log out?
Julie, every single second of that 80 minutes, the teacher will be there and the teacher will be available.
Good, I like it, thank you. And then the last question, my last question is, for period one, if they have two things like PE inquire, how does that work with the schedule?
Got to pick one.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, thanks Julie, sure.
All right, next question, I don't know the first name, but go ahead, Candy?
Oh.
Candy, are you there? Okay, I heard the voice briefly. Yeah, you want to move on to the next?
We'll go to the next one here, Masha.
Sorry, this is me again, asking for a friend, actually. The question is, will there be electives?
Absolutely, 100% yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I'm getting better on my pacing of my responses.
All right, maybe this is Rhonda.
Rhonda, go ahead.
Hi, most of my questions have been answered already. So the last question I would have is, first, let me say that distance learning wasn't all bad last year. I think that we did pretty good with it. The only frustration that we had is what leads me to my question. And is that, will all of the teachers be required to use the same platforms? Like, we were looking for homework on Google Classroom and some teachers would have it on Google Classroom and others wouldn't.
What a great question, and you're absolutely right. I mean, that came right out of the parent surveys at the tail end of last year. And so we premised this week by looking at those challenges, the, the, the kind of wonky schedule that we had. Well, we didn't want that this time. We will be using a common platform, it is an absolute expectation and a must. So we talked about how we're going to align that. We had Google Classroom trainings yes, yesterday. And we are going to pick components that we are all going to use regardless. So it's all about alignment, because we know that helps you at home.
Right, thank you so much.
Absolutely, thanks.
Yeah, I'm going to jump back, the call, the person that tried to get in last time is now back, so go ahead.
Hi, yeah, I'll make mine really quick. Number one is, will music be in those class two through six? Do they have the same advisor for that, that they had last year for that advisory? And when you move to blended learning, like if the blended comes in, will they be sticking with the same schedule or will all the schedules change?
Okay, first question was about music, right, correct? Yes, music is going to be in the schedule. So it'll be basically the same schedule as if we were to be here live. It's just kind of chopped up a little bit differently. And, oh my gosh, I can't remember the name.
The second one was the, the advisor. Is it, is the advisor going to be staying the same for that?
That's an interesting point. No, the teacher won't be the same, but we're toying with the idea of keeping the cohort advisor, advisory class the same. So those students kind of feel comfortable going into this next aspect. And your third question, once again, I'm sorry, oh, the schedule.
Is it going to change when you move to blended?
It will most likely change. It must, because what we're doing right now, we could not accommodate that many students onsite. It just wouldn't be safe, we don't have the room to do so. But it's, it's close in that we'll continue to follow our periods. We just may end up doing a early bird, late bird or, or something like that. So we go 50% of the time. That's the work where actually at the beginning of the year, we're going to get off to a really rock-solid start that we're going to begin the work of looking at the best blended model that we can. Okay, thanks.
Okay, next is, looks like Sean.
Great name.
I know, I was named just for you.
Go ahead, Sean.
I just had a, I just had a question about the, kind of the surveys. And you sent out the parent survey, you surveyed the kids. Can you talk a little bit about some of the takeaways from that survey? Some of the positives, some of the areas of opportunity? And how that kind of informs your approach to the distance learning for the fall?
Wonderful, really good question, Sean. As I recall, and we had, I would say around 410 respondents out of a school of 450 families. So that's pretty emblematic of kind of the greater feeling of things. I found it was about a 60/40 split for parents. 60% wanted some form of blended, where 40 wanted a, a distance learning model. We found that the vast majority, something like 90% of our families have a device. And that truly informs the work that we're going to be doing with the tech team on, who needs a device? How can we get these devices to students as soon as possible so that we can hit the ground running as far as they are concerned? We also found that I would, I want to say about 86% did not need childcare in any, any way. And of the few respondents who said yes, it was really mostly after school at this point. There was only a couple of respondents that said they needed early morning. And the other takeaway was, oh, and this was a big one as well. Right around 15 to 20% of our respondents said that they do not have reliable internet at home. And so that's an important thing to keep in mind. Does that answer your question, Sean? Okey-dokey.
You did somehow.
Wait, let's, let's get a couple more in.
Okay. Okay, next up is Jean.
Jean, go ahead.
Hi, we are in the process of moving to Pebble Beach. And so I have an eighth grader who is starting school in a new environment, a new And so I have an eighth grader who is starting school in a new environment, um, a new demographic. And wondering if you're going to be offering anything for new students to get connected with the school, with their peers?
Wow, wonderful question. But first, first of all, welcome to PGUSD, welcome to PG Middle, it's nice to have you. That is a great question. And, and what I'd like you to do, Jean, if you would, is just email me.
I would love to.
And let me know. I know the first thing that comes off the top of my head is our advisory class. It's a, it's a class divided up among the whole staff. But they're very small numbers, manageable numbers, 15, 16 kids. And it is an opportunity for kids to kind of say how they're feeling, to deal with conflict, to learn lessons on how to be a good person. I think that's a natural kind of connection to them. Um, and then I know our teachers are going to have an environment that's respectful and kind to one another. And if we let that, those teachers know that it's a new student, they can certainly help out.
Terrific, thank you so much.
Yes, nice to meet you.
You too.
Okay, Mr. Roach, let's see if we can get to the next, like, four here, all right?
Rapid fire.
Kene. Kene there? Let's see, did I miss, oh, I missed Ping, I'm sorry, let me go to Ping.
Oh, hi, thank you, um, thank you for this opportunity for me to ask question. I have two questions. One is very easy. Um, my daughter is, um, going to be a seventh grader. And she told me very proudly that her teacher, her math teacher, has asked her to be a TA next year, which is this year. Given that we're gonna start with online learning, uh, is that still possible?
No, sorry, very short answer, but no. Um, we will, we want to put that student in something academic, um, rather than kind of staring off in the side of a digital classroom. Now, if we were to reintegrate, um, you know, quarter two or at the semester, which seems a little bit more likely, we can certainly rejuvenate that schedule.
Thank you. Well, she'll be disappointed, but I think she'll understand.
Yeah, definitely.
My, my second question is, um, last year, there was no standardized type test, like S-Back?
That's correct.
So, um, I don't know what's gonna happen this year. But since such tests are very important to, to, as a criteria to evaluate the schools, the students' performance. I'm just wondering, without such a test, um, what are the other measures the school is considering to evaluate the achievement of the students?
I think I get what you're saying, Ping, um, absolutely. First of all, the, the S-Back test at the tail end of the year, I really don't know. I would hazard a guess to say that it's gonna be, um, put off at least another year. But that kind of a test, Ping, is, is, is a postmortem test. And what that means is, it's a test that lets you know how a student did, but you don't have the ability to instruct them anymore. So what we do here at this school, and I said it a little bit earlier, assess early and often, is we're going to be assessing our students a lot more frequently. And with the test being much smaller, and what that does is that informs the instruction for the teachers and allows them to quickly react to deficits. Or it lets a teacher know, hey, you guys are doing good, let's go ahead and keep going. Does that make sense?
That's great, thank you.
Sure thing.
And I'm sorry that I can't get to Kene, it looks like Kene doesn't have a microphone. So Kene, please shoot us an email or, or give us a call. Uh, Shannon, we're running out of time here, folks, so let's try to keep as brief as possible, we'll get you as much info as possible. Here's Shannon.
Yeah, oh, okay. Okay, I was just wondering, so, um, my daughter is not super comfortable all the time, like, being in front of the camera. Do you guys, like, have a way to kind of engage the students about that? And, and how to keep themselves, you know, not overly, um, self-conscious? Or are you guys gonna address that with them at the beginning this year?
Absolutely, you know, part of our discussion, Shannon, today was, um, one of the teachers was wondering, how can we make sure that there is engagement in the class? And, you know, well, you can see your faces, well, that's not the case with every student, right? Some of those students don't want to show what their bedroom looks like, or don't want to show, you know, their new haircut or something like that. And so that kind of led us into a conversation about how can we continue to engage those students? Um, but make sure that they feel comfortable in that engagement. So I think that's a process of trust, getting to trust your teacher. Um, having your teacher understand that the student doesn't feel comfortable in front of the class. And then slowly kind of building that comfort in a culture of kindness, even a virtual culture of kindness. So that, um, that student feels like they can, they can, um, show their face and interact like.
Okay, so they're not gonna be forced?
Uh, I wouldn't do it, heck no. That, I don't think that'd be beneficial for the student, Shannon.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so just a heads up to everybody, we are gonna get to the last hand that was up at six o'clock, and that is Sundip, it appears. So, um, we're not gonna move on now to Bill.
Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, I, uh, just wanted to state that I really like the way the middle school has set up the program. And as a unified school district, I scratched my head over the high school schedule that they dreamed up. And I would hope that since Dr. Porus is listening, and maybe some school board members that it's parent and student driven. It should not be teacher driven. And the survey of the high school was very teacher driven as far as this oddball schedule. But I think that a unified, for parents, it's a lot easier if there was some kind of a consistency between, uh, the school sites. And the middle school, I think, has it right. That's all, just a comment, thank you.
That's okay, thanks for your comment, Bill.
Thank you, next up is Katie.
Uh, can you hear me? I'm, I think I hit, okay, cool, thank you. I have a couple of quick questions. Um, first of all, I just wanted to clarify, and I apologize because I jumped on a touch light. Um, I wanted to, um, clarify how choir was going to run.
Good question, Katie. So, um, we have not spoken to Mr. Mazur other than at the tail end of next year, in which he really expressed his, his want to continue choir. I know that Mr. Mazur met with the elementary teachers today to kind of figure out, is this gonna look like virtual, that kind of thing? So since he is the majority at the elementary schools, I figured this would be an appropriate time to talk to him about his middle school plans. But we fully intend to offer choir, um, beginning day one.
Okay, terrific, thank you very much. Um, my other question, or actually, I had two other questions, I apologize. Um, one was about advisory. Um, can you just kind of give me an overview of how that's supposed to run on the, on Mondays?
Mr. Tavani, I'm gonna turn it over to you while I take a sip of water.
Sure, yeah, um, so advisory, um, I don't know if you recall, but last year, we had an advisory period. And it meant on Monday mornings, we modified our schedule so that we could have this time to implement a program called Character Strong, which is all about character education, character development, and social emotional learning. And so we didn't want to scrap that idea. We saw enough gains, um, with our work with it last year, um, in terms of building some community around school and giving students an opportunity to talk about different things than what they might talk about in a content class. And, um, uh, interact with each other differently than they do in a content class. And so we're keeping that in the schedule. How that will look, um, it is on a Monday. And so that's the, um, only portion of that Monday schedule that is live and synchronous with a teacher. There'll be other opportunities for students to connect with their teachers via office hours. But, um, that is the live, um, portion. And we are gonna use that in the beginning of the year to do some much, well, to help us do some much needed training. So that students are all, um, prepared for when the work gets hard. And not that it's not gonna be hard at first, but we're gonna include things in that advisory class. Um, like, here's how we would like you to label, and I know you'll appreciate this one, Katie. Here's how to label your assignments when you submit them, so that when they get into my inbox, right? So we're gonna use it for that, for a little while. Of course, with some, we've been calling them like weather checks or temperature checks. But this is just a way to check in with kids really quickly through a, a quick survey or, or other process on, how are you? Is everything going okay? Do you need to talk to somebody? Do you want to talk to me? Um, and just make sure that we're giving a lot of opportunity for kids to let us know how we can help them. Um, our whole staff is very on board with both advisory and this idea that we really need to make sure that our kids are well and healthy before we hit them real hard with, with, um, you know, a new way of learning.
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you for that, Jason. I think that is, um, that, especially those organizational tactics and, um, making sure that these kids, especially the incoming sixth graders, staying on task and figuring out how to navigate six classes. I, I really appreciate that, I think that sounds terrific. Um, my final statement slash comment actually kind of refers back to the last, um, the, the last question that came through. Um, I am a high school teacher, and one of the reasons that we chose the, um, schedule that we chose is primarily because of relationship building. It allows us to get closer to those, um, those individual groups. We're only going to be running three, maybe four classes per, uh, you know, per quarter. So it allows us to see their individual needs. And I understand, you know, at, at each of the different levels, why, you know, why the schools are running the schedules that they're choosing. Um, but we're doing, I think all of us are doing the best that we possibly can for the kids. Um, and want to, want to see them succeed as much as we can. So thank you guys very much for running this town hall, I appreciate it.
Awesome, thanks Katie.
Thanks Katie. Next, uh, last name Hill, it looks like. Oh, missed the button.
Okay, thank you, thank you so much, um, Mr. Roach, Mr. Tavani. This is, I feel so much better. After hearing
That was our goal.
Yeah, after hearing your concrete plans and knowing that this plan is viable to transition to blended learning. Or it's gonna be, you know, um, able to, to be flexible to accommodate the school and, and the parents. I, I love that. Um, my question is, I have an eighth grader.
Okay.
What modifications will be made to the service learning requirements?
Oh, gosh darn, good question. Um, you know, that is something, so my counselor comes back on Monday. And I have something else to add to our list for our discussion, is how is that gonna be amended? Now, that is a, um, a board approved program. So if I need to amend it, I would need to take it to the board and have a discussion with them, and then they would need to approve it. Um, but that's a fantastic question. Um, you know, I hate to kind of be ever the optimist, but I'm really hopeful at some point that we're gonna be able to rejoin everybody, um, for a portion of this school year. And my first inkling is when that does occur, and we're all kind of out and about the way we used to be, um, maybe we could prorate that amount. But I don't have a definitive answer for you just yet, but I really appreciate the heads up on that, that's a good point.
Thank you.
Absolutely, I'm writing it down right now.
All right, and it looks like our last question here, Sundip.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, yeah, just quickly, I was curious, what, um, strategies are now sort of being recommended for differentiation? I know you've talked about the frequent assessments, but it seems differentiation seems harder in a virtual environment. And are there sort of now some, um, commonly accepted strategies to try to achieve differentiation? So kids are at their level and also challenged at the same time? Thanks.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's a great point. Okay, well, there's, there's a number of things. I could, I could go a little bit farther on this answer than we have time for. But, um, absolutely, I think the more we've known and learned about technology, the, the wider variety that we have to be able to present information to students, um, in a, in a variety of modalities. But I think the other end of it is true as well. I think students can demonstrate knowledge. Um, they can do projects, they can do electronic kind of, um, fancy ways to show teachers that they understand. I think if anything, um, if there's one or a, a few bright spots to this entire thing that we're going through, it is kind of thinking about different ways that we can present information. And that, that information can be mastered and refigured and presented back to other students in the class and, and the teacher as well. Also too, remember, we do make sure to keep our students of concern at the top of our mind. And we, we discuss on a weekly basis how to alter or differentiate our instruction. We have aides in the classroom who don't serve just a few, um, students, but more students, all students in the class. So that is definitely something, I mean, differentiation face to face is definitely important as well. In a virtual environment, we're, we are going to, um, go down that road and learn everything that we possibly. Okay, thank you, Sundip. Mr. Tavani, is that our final?
Yeah, that's, that's it, and it only took us an extra 11 minutes.
Well worth it, well worth it though. Hey, folks, I just wanted to take a moment and say, this was fun. Um, I enjoyed the, uh, the conversation. And I think it's important as a parent, as well as an administrator of this school, that this really be focused on understanding the direction that we're going, understanding some of the thought processes behind our decisions. Um, and really allowing you guys to fully understand so that your student feels comfortable launching in a distance learning environment. So, um, I hope we did that today. It does not mean that we're gonna close off our emails and have no communication. So we are always able to discuss things with you either over the phone or via email. But I want to thank you guys for your time, I'm sure you're all hungry. And perhaps just a little bit sick of listening to me talk. So, everybody have a great evening, Mr. Tavani, thank you so much, you did very well.
Well done, Mr. Roach, thank you.
All right.
Good night, thank you very much.
Good night, everybody.